I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council to order. Um, roll call please.
Mayor Parton. Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day. Counselor Stokes.
Is Counselor Stokes on?
She indicated that she was going to join virtually, so we've been...
I've been working to get her on.
Okay.
Could you call her and see if she can just, um...
I think she was having a hard time hearing because she hung up.
It says connecting, but it's not connected.
Okay, we're just doing attendance, so you can go to closed session, so I'm just gonna mark you as here for attendance.
Just say here.
Okay, I just need you to say here.
Here.
Okay.
Um, Counselor Holloway. All right, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, do I hear a, um, motion to go into closed session? Uh, under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one to discuss and consider personnel matters?
Vice Mayor, one second. Before she can vote for that, you're gonna have to do a motion to allow...
Oh, that's right, okay. All right. Do I hear a motion to allow Counselor Stokes to participate remotely? Okay. Hold this in favor. All right, all right.
Sorry, Vice Mayor, did we miss her statement as to why she's participating remotely?
We're gonna undo that in a second, okay. Um, can, um, can you tell us, Counselor Stokes, why you are participating remotely?
Counselor Stokes, I need you to say into the record why you're participating remotely and where you're participating from.
I'm participating, I'm participating from my home. And I'm, I'm, I'm currently under medical...
Okay. All right. So maybe I do need to redo that, that, um, motion, do...
No, you do the motion and then you do discussion. So now you would do discussion.
Do discussion. Is there any discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah. Yeah.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
All right, motion passes four to zero.
Do we need to do anything since Counselor Day has just come in? Since...
No, she'll, she'll, you read the closed session language and then she can participate in our motion.
Okay, all right, that's fine, just wanna make sure since she wasn't for roll call.
That's what we normally do, but for whatever reason, they started up...
But you haven't done the closed session language.
It's the same thing as what Mayor Parton was doing. Because you already have quorum, it, it, you don't have to redo the...
Okay, okay, the roll call, okay, thank you.
But she has to be present.
They were already going into closed session.
She has to be counted as present, just ask them...
That's what I'm saying, I just wanna make sure she's counted as present for the minutes.
Like here.
Yeah, for minute wise, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put latent parentheses around the time sheet.
She's automatically having did the, um, roll call for the closed session.
Okay. So now, do I hear a suggested motion to move to go into closed meeting under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointees, city clerk contract, city clerk, city manager, city attorney performance evaluation process, planning commission, economic development authority, Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A twenty-nine and eight to discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, discussion of an unsolicited offer of real estate property, and Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A eight, treasurer's and director of finances duties. Your motion. Okay. Any discussion? All is in favor? Okay, that is your roll call, okay, roll call.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. So move.
All right, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day? Counselor Stokes?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
No.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay. All right, certification please.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code session two point two dash three seven one one D, where only public business matters one lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and two identified enclosed in the motion discussed in closed meeting. Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. This time, is there a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Arnold Day to the planning commission?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Holloway?
Just, I haven't gathered clarification, uh, directly from the city attorneys. I wanted to make certain that it was talked to to make sure that there was no conflict, there's no conflict of interest, um, with Mr. Day serving seeing that, his wife serves on the city council, does that present any conflict of interest?
There's, there's no reason that Mr. Day could not be selected. Um, as to who votes on the matter, that's, 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 that's a different issue that, that every counselor has to make their own decisions about, about what and whether to vote on.
So, and, and that including like votes going forward for planning commission?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you, counselor.
Is that the same thing with voting going forward?
You mean to say, I mean, if we're, if we're talking about...
Oh, well, never mind, 'cause it, it is all in public interest, so, never mind, I, I...
Sorry, there's, there's some feedback happening.
Yeah, I'm not sure where. But, uh, never mind, I, I just thought about something that kinda, uh, relieves my, uh, conflict. So, my conflict inquiry. I just wanted to get the clarification, but I think, um, I think it's fine because, um, it's in, you know, this, those would be votes for public interest, so... She could still then vote tonight according to, I mean, the information that we were given last time, uh, now that I'm just thinking about it, because this vote would be in public interest, correct?
I'm not quite sure I follow in the question.
Remember, we were given, we were given the legal last time that the only reason it would be a conflict is if it would have some personal benefit, but in this case, there's no personal benefit. This is something that's voting for the, for these overall public's best interest. I, that was the information that Mr. Kalos, what's his name?
Kalos.
Kalos gave him. So, a- anyway, my, my concern with conflict is...
Okay. Uh, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Uh, for public interest, I'm gonna recuse myself in the end.
Counselor Stokes?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Uh, yes.
Motion passes six to one. I'm sorry, five to one.
And just make sure that in the minutes, it's annotated that Counselor Day, uh, recused herself. Okay. Uh, moving on to communications from citizens. Do we have anyone signed up? No? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak that didn't sign up? Okay. Moving right on along into work sessions. Uh, first one, Mr. Ward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight's work session is regarding a right-of-way vacation request for a public right-of-way that's adjacent to, uh, three nineteen Maryland Avenue, also identified as parcel zero two four zero five one zero and zero two four zero four three zero. Again, this right-of-way vacation request, um, is a piece of public right-of-way that's actually enclosed by those two parcels, oh two four oh five one zero and oh two four oh four three zero, approximately seven hundred thirty-six square feet. This property in question is located in Ward Two and zoned R two. There's an image of the, uh, an aerial of the church. Uh, the applicant is, um, the West End Presbyterian Church of Hopewell. And the portion shown in red is public right-of-way, and they are asking for the vacation of that. So, uh, like any other right-of-way vacation request, we, we send the request off to several city departments just to make sure that there are no utilities or easements, um, that coincide with a particular right-of-way and, um, there are no utilities or easements in place according to water renewal, public works, or stormwater. Staff is recommending to approve the request to vacate this portion. Uh, we don't see any potential future use for this particular public right-of-way. It dead-ends for one. Uh, it, it inhibits the church from their ability to expand, um, any of their buildings on the property, so staff is recommending, um, to approve the request to vacate. Available for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Ward? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move into work session number two, Ms. Martinez.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I come before you again to discuss the Nova South agreement. Um, in which, uh, last city council meeting, you had asked me to come back with a modified version. Uh, that is included in your packet. It is still the staff's recommendation that we go with the original, um, MOA, which, uh, will have Nova operating during operational hours. Vice Mayor Joyner, you had asked for cost per hour to operate our building. It's two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents per hour. So, um, with that, opening up three hours extra for swim team in the morning is seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents. Times two, for two days a week, is fifteen fifty-eight, eighty. And during that timeframe, we're only generating currently three hundred and ninety-six dollars in revenue. So that puts us at a loss of eleven sixty-two, eighty. The modified MOU, MOA, excuse me, um, actually has most of what Nova SWAP had requested, with the exception of instead of having five lanes on Tuesday, Thursday, they're working with four lanes. But they get their Mondays, oh, sorry, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, four lanes, four forty-five to seven forty-five P M. Tuesday, Thursday mornings from four forty-five to seven forty-five. And then Saturday hours for the three hours that they have requested. In order to, oh, sorry. In order to make this MOA feasible, uh, we are requesting an aquatics program specialist for the four months at four thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. So, that would be a total investment of eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars for the four months for May and August fiscal year. I'm open for questions now, Mayor, if you're...
Counselor Holloway?
So you were still suggesting the modification even though the swim team is basically saying they would have to cancel everything because it doesn't work for them?
I'm saying that we're operating at a loss having them in the pool during outside of operational hours. As I just mentioned, the cost to open up the building for them is seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty cents per day.
But, but why would there be a loss when they were here specifically asked them the questions, which they said they were, uh, applicable to pay for that?
'Cause they're, they're only paying eleven, currently, the MOA is eleven dollars per lane per hour. That's six lanes for those hours that they were not open to the general public. That's sixty-six dollars per hour, uh, for that hour. Times the two days a week, uh, we're looking at a hundred and ninety-eight dollars, right? And then times two is two hundred, sorry, three hundred and ninety-six dollars.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not talking about for the lane cost. When they were here that night, she said she was willing to, um, take on the costs and provide the necessary staffing.
Correct.
Additionally, not... So, there'd be no loss if they were gonna take on the expense, because my question to them was, um, would, well, one, I asked them, would they be coming here additionally or earlier than, um, what the community center opens? And they were saying, no, not, not earlier than it opens, but coming to, during the time that it's already open, but having that accessibility or, or of that nature. But I thought we were talking about getting with them to make, the direction that was given from council was getting with them to see what middle ground there could be because we risk losing them all together if we couldn't at least give another lane or so.
So their middle ground, ground is four lanes, Monday through Friday, four forty-five to seven forty-five P M. Tuesday, Thursday mornings, before the building is open to the general public, for their sole use of six lanes. And then six lanes on Saturdays, 'cause we're currently closed on Saturdays until we reopen, then they will go down to four lanes to the general public. Your question in regards to what they said, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of Ms. Waterworth, um, we can, we can look at the minutes and the video. They said they are willing to incur that extra cost if I were to go down on the lane rental cost. So at some point, they gotta figure out what works for their budget. But I'm telling you right now, based off my previous conversations with her, asking her to get to fifteen dollars an hour was already a stretch. So, if we want to have them come in outside of operational hours, the cost per lane per hour is gonna be a significant amount where I don't know if they'll be able to afford it. But again, I don't wanna speak on their behalf, just based off of previous conversations. I'm just speaking to that.
So, I'm sorry.
I, I, I think that it wouldn't be appropriate to make a decision tonight. I think we need to bring them back in together, uh...
Can I just, the presentation, or, sorry?
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, uh, to bring them back in together, to have some type of, um, have them on both sides so that we can see before. Because it is my understanding, the way it was presented to us the last time, that we now risk losing them all together.
That is correct. If, if you, uh, if the original agreement goes through, that is what their stance is, correct?
Correct.
Um, my goal, as your director of recreation and parks, is to rebuild our aquatics team, to provide that accessibility to our residents. In order for me to do that, I have to have lane usage to provide swim lessons, lifeguard certifications, potentially beginner kayaking classes again. I can't do that if a outside organization is utilizing five, four, whatever the case may be, lanes nine months out of the year. So we have to decide where we want our priorities at. Serving the residents and providing accessible and affordable subsidized ex, uh, access to exis, uh, recreational activity or having an outside agency come in and monopolize that asset.
We, we definitely don't, uh, I don't, I don't stand, uh, thinking a council member up here will, will talk about monopolizing, which is why we were very specific, um, with the lane use, uh, making it accessible to the public first and foremost, to the taxpayers, and, but also, um, negotiating time use and again, meeting down the middle. Uh, the other thing was, uh, it, it seems, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems a little bit tenuous, I believe, to, for us to take on those things at the time, which I believe you were speaking about the last time, was very difficult, uh, for you to find, uh, qualified, uh, lifeguards and so forth and so on. And this was something that they can more easily obtain. So, are you speaking of now going forward to offer these aquatics? Have we, have, have stuff turned around to the place where you're now able to find these, um, lifeguards and so forth and so on that were not accessible to you at all at first?
Yes, sir. So we currently have an offer out to an aquatics program specialist, which is a position that you will allow me to combine part-time wages for. So we have that candidate, she's in the process of onboarding. So that gives me an additional full-time. The request today to make sure this MOA happens the way that they, Nova South, would like it to happen. In regards to having the more accessibility, I would need the additional eighteen thousand in our budget to have a secondary. So we had two top candidates for that specialist position, but obviously we want our top candidate, 'cause we only had one full-time position.
What's the additional eighteen thousand for the same...
That would get me through the four months remaining in this fiscal year. So I can hire that second specialist.
What is the numbers that you were saying we were losing if we were opening up?
When we open three hours before timeframe, we are losing one thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents because we are only currently generating three hundred and ninety-six dollars of revenue for those two days. Now, this MOA does bring them up to fifteen dollars an hour, which will lower the loss to one thousand eighteen dollars and eighty cents.
And is this per week, per month?
That, that would be per week, yeah.
Per week, okay.
Yes, sir. 'Cause they, they only come in outside of operational hours right now, Tuesday, Thursday mornings. Saturdays, I do plan on resuming, so they would work within our operational hours at that point.
Okay. Um, you know, I don't, I don't know what we can do. Uh, obviously, council members will speak, um, you know, what their feelings and, and things are, but I, I, I really don't desire to lose this swim team, um, and, and I, I really just don't desire that. And, um, yeah, I, I, I just hope that something more amenable can, can take place.
Okay. Um, Dr. Manker, and then, uh, myself.
Um, Ms. Martinez, is this their original agreement?
So, both of them are included in there, though, if you notice on page four, I'm sorry, my eyes are not that great.
So this is the old plus the new, uh, you've...
Correct, yes, both, both were included in this budget, oh, sorry, this presentation.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Laura, um, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Waterworth.
Waterworth. Um, she actually agreed to the, the option we have on the screen right here.
This, that option that was on the screen currently?
So I just wanna let the council know that this is more than what she's receiving now, so we did reach a middle ground. She emailed over some additional questions that we answered, uh, uh, today. Um, and I, I think, um, we require an additional, um, lifeguard, um, in order to make this work and in order to keep it open before hours, and that's really what their request is today.
Okay.
Wait, wait a minute. Clarification, can you give me some clarification? 'Cause now I'm confused. My question was, did, did, are we going with this agreement? That seems like it's mixed in the middle, but your opening statement might have not been correct. 'Cause you had said we were, you were not recommending we're going with this new one. You were recommending going with the original, which is why I was speaking the way I was. So are you talking about going with this one that's meeting down the middle? Or are you talking about going with the original?
It is staff recommendation that we go with the original request. However, based off of feedback from city council, I, we had come to an agreement on the second one.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get, I was speaking to that fact.
I'll have to end up, you know, reaching out to them and, you know, just, you know, verifying for myself because, I mean, the only reason that I think, you know, this middle ground came about is they saw it on the agenda and nobody from the city had reached out to them in a month.
That's incorrect. I did not reach out to them within that timeframe, but I did tell them that we were doing a presentation to city council in regards to the MOA.
So did you ask, you know, Lauren or Mr. Royster, hey, can we sit down and have a meeting and talk?
Mayor Parton, this is a facility rental, it's...
That, that's not my question. My question is...
No, I did not, no, sir.
You did not, okay. So, what I'm asking now is, well, not even asking, I mean, it, it's just, it's going back. Yeah, this is, you know, it's a middle ground, you know? I hate to say this, but right now, I'm gonna have to verify this, you know, on my own because I don't think that this has been given the respect and has, you know, gone through what the wishes of council was. So, you know, I know it's a work session, we're here to talk about it tonight, but I'm just very disappointed.
I, I would, I would deal with those same sentiments because it, you know, it was, we gave direction on what was important to us, and I think most of council, at least that night, was very specific in, in that direction. So again, I, I, for me, it would be, let's get them in here at the same time.
I mean, the thing is, we could all work together for this. Other facilities are able to do this, where they can work with citizen programming. We also asked for a plan on expanding out hours for more weekend access. And, you know, we still don't have that, so, you know. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna have to just reach out to Lauren and Mr. Royster myself.
That's fine, let me know what the MOA is gonna be, sir, and we'll take care of it.
All right.
I, I, I think that is inappropriate.
I agree, but I'm not even gonna entertain the disrespectfulness, so...
I think, still, I'll speak to it. I think that is inappropriate for you to respond in that manner. Uh, I think it was quite, it, it was disrespectful, it was condescending in the most inappropriate way, but anyway. Um, again, I think, like, going forward, you know, yeah, I have more children probably than anybody in this room, so, and, and my kids are very active. All honor roll students, thank God, and very active in, in, in sports. And, you know, it's, it's important for, I think, any citizen in this room to make certain that we have that accessibility inside of the, um, inside of the, uh, community center. Uh, however, I, I still think that even the citizens would agree to, like, if their swim team, anybody can join these swim teams and so forth, that they still want some type of, um, you know, road down the middle, bring us those costs as to how much it would cost to extend hours, um, to the city and, you know...
I have that for you guys.
You know, um, mapping out, you know, new costs. We take on costs, I mean, like, these are, this is for our citizens, they pay taxpayer dollars. Um, whatever we have to be amenable to, to make sure that it works, we, we just, we have to get there.
So to open up an additional, our Saturday hours, to resume our Saturday hours and the extra hour on the Monday through Friday, it would be a total investment of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents for the year.
So, I mean, why isn't that included in our packet? Yeah, I mean, we...
I apologize, it was not. Uh, this discussion was part of the MOA. I believe that was a separate one that was coming out to you guys in an email, so that's my misunderstanding.
All right. All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez.
No problem.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the regular meeting to order. Uh, roll call please.
Mayor Parton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Ellis?
Here.
Counselor Day?
Here.
Counselor Stokes? This is the attendance for the regular meeting. Just say here, Counselor Stokes. Counselor Holloway? You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Uh, this time, we'll have the prayer by evangelist right, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Counselor Day. Please rise.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day once again, God, that you've granted us with, with God. Lord, we thank you for bringing us to this point this day, God. And Lord, as we come together, Father, with the city officials and all of those citizens, God, we ask that you come into them, Miss, Father God, and bring an atmosphere of peace. Lord, allow everyone to be on the same accord, Father God, that the agenda and the, on the agenda, the concerns and cares would be addressed appropriately, decently, and in order. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, and the direct public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This time, is there a motion to adopt the regular meeting agenda?
So move.
Second half.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yeah.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
No.
I'll second it. Uh, motion's been made by Counselor Day, seconded by myself. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Ellis?
Yes.
Counselor Day?
Yes.
Counselor Stokes?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Uh, moving on to information presentations, number one, Mr. Bennett.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, uh, I'm here tonight, uh, as an information presentation. Uh, there's no action requested tonight. I would, I will be coming back, with, uh, Ms. Martinez in, um, two weeks at the next meeting, uh, to ask for a letter of support for a, uh, uh, an earmark that, uh, we are pursuing. So, um, the way that this came about essentially is we meet regularly with our, uh, grant writing consultants, uh, that are under contract with the City of Hopewell and the retainer to identify projects, uh, and possibilities for applications for, for earmark funding and other things. And, um, we were going down the list of projects and, uh, in the city and looking at the different earmark, uh, proposals, uh, that, uh, funding sources we could apply for. And there was a really, really good match between the HUD Community Development, uh, earmark program and the, uh, Hopewell Community Center, specifically, uh, some of the, um, air conditioning ventilation and then the upgrades to the, um, uh, locker rooms, uh, for accessibility. And so, um, one of the things in our strategic plan that we do, uh, the Economic Development Strategic Plan that was adopted by city council, uh, one of the things that, that we look at in economic development is essentially the lifestyles and amenities that are taking place, uh, within the city. And so I met with, uh, Director Martinez, who was, uh, who was out, uh, for, for training, uh, we met, um, and traded text messages and information, and we met again this afternoon before this presentation to make sure we were on the same page. We're working closely together to get all the information in order for the grant writers to make this application. Uh, they feel like, uh, that a, uh, enhancement to the community center, which is open to all of our, our citizens, um, and serves everyone in the city, is a really great, uh, project for the, for this funding. And so, um, you'll see this funding also in, in the cap, requests also in the, in the capital plan for Recreation and Parks. We've been collaborating, uh, seeing the Recreation and Parks plan and, um, and, uh, so this would be, if we get this earmark funding, then it would obviously replace, uh, having to get this revenue from, from internally in the city. So, um, in the packet that you have, you'll also see, uh, descriptions about that program and other programs. And, uh, Director Crocker is gonna be coming and speaking about some of the public works things as well. But, uh, that is why I'm here and, uh, you know, one of the things we learned is that, uh, economic development, it, it rests on top of, uh, human development, leadership development, and community development. So it's very important that we continue to have the strong vibrant, uh, community center, uh, which I like to remind people was where I learned not to drown. I didn't, I didn't really learn to swim there, but I learned not to drown there, and that's, that's helped me my whole life, so, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bennett? All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Crocker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mike Crocker, Director of Public Works, Acting Director of Water Renewal. Uh, just following up on what Charles had said, uh, earmark is a funding opportunity for us. Um, an opportunity to essentially use federal funding to, um, replace funding that we would otherwise have to use local dollars for. Um, I will be, also be coming back towards the end of the month. Right now, we're pursuing a path of a water project. We have plenty of needs in water. Um, the typical ask for a project like this would be two million or less. Um, it's important to know that this is an eighty-twenty earmark, so twenty percent would need to come from the city. Timing is also important. Uh, project would need to commence towards the end of calendar year twenty twenty-six. We don't have a project in hand at the moment, um, but when we do come back towards the end of the month, in two weeks, we'll have a project and we'll need a vote, uh, simply because of the twenty percent. So, pure, tonight is purely informational. Um, feel free to ask questions if you'd like. And if not, that's really all I have.
Are there any questions, uh, for Mr. Crocker? I don't have a question, but more just a comment. It, there's also, um, some pockets of money, um, at the federal level that I think Jennifer McClellan's office, our Congresswoman for this area, um, could help us with. Uh, her chief of staff or policy person, uh, his name is Donald Pollard. Um, I don't know if you've spoken or talked with him any, um, but he can help guide through, in addition to this, some of these other buckets of money that could help us get some federal funds to help fix, um, our wastewater plant and some, you know, stormwater issues, um, as well.
Uh, yes, so our grant writer's been in, uh, contact with Mr. Pollard.
Oh, yes, okay.
Um, and by virtue of my former positions, I have pretty good connections with those folks. I keep an eye on them, whether it's really my responsibility or not. If it benefits the city, then that's by all means, all good. Um, and I'll push it to whomever is responsible. But, uh, we actually have a pending earmark too for Heretic. Now, that's pending in the current federal budget, and I'm not sure what's gonna materialize with that, so, um, I'm not really holding out hope for that one, but we'll keep pushing anytime there is an earmark opportunity.
Okay.
Or, or other federal funding opportunity to put a project to it.
Okay. And then I know that we had a conversation, you know, about some unrelated projects, but with the Heretic project, do you foresee that one, you know? Let's just, for conversation's sake, say we do get that earmark. Do you guys foresee, you know, a big, you know, additional increase that we're gonna have to go on budget for?
Uh, if we get the earmark, not as big as the ask will be.
For the other ones, right, that we, yeah.
Right now, the ask for the next budget will be for the full project cost.
Okay.
Um, if we got the earmark, it would drastically reduce that or allow us to repurpose that for another project.
Yeah, well, I know what it was, you know, when Stephen Edwards first put it together, but that's, you know, drastically, you know, increased since then. Uh, well, I think when, um, Stephen Edwards had it, it was like eight hundred thousand dollars, but I think it's much more than that now.
It, it is. I mean, with COVID increases, supply chain, it's north of two million. Don't give me any exact figure with, with the project engineering construction, especially this north of two million.
Okay.
Also, also, uh, a ditto to what the, um, the mayor was saying, that, because, I mean, it's good that you have those connections because that's one of the things, when we had a meeting, I think it was, uh, the city manager, uh, and I attended a meeting with, um, with the Congresswoman, and she was saying that Hopewell was missing out on those funds. Also, with the Crater, uh, Planning Commission as well, they have some new staff there, um, that is very versed on, um, grant funding and stuff that can kind of like allude with these, uh, projects based upon certain conditions. So if you haven't reached out to them too, that'd probably be very.
They've been very helpful, uh, with the NPO, getting funding, additional funding for transportation projects where we have a deficit. They've been very helpful with that. I will say this, I'll offer this up as, you know, a, a shameless plug for a former, former program, and it's really contingent upon audits. I've mentioned it before. Hopewell being a disadvantaged locality with a lower MHI has significant opportunities when we're financially capable and need to borrow money, that some of that money gets given to us in the form of principal forgiveness. And principal forgiveness, I mean, we would likely qualify, depending on our sewer rates, it is a condition of where your rates are at relative to median household income, as to whether or not you can get a zero percent loan and a principal forgiveness. Um, but a lot of that money that's doled out to the states has to come to local governments, especially disadvantaged ones in the form of principal forgiveness. So it's something to keep our eye on for the future, for sure. It's something that never leaves my mind, but I also spent ten years working on it, so it's forefront for me.
Well, with that, I mean, that's a, you know, great caveat to know. You know, because of, you know, our audit issue, you know, what we were able to do on the school side in order to keep, you know, head start money, we were able to do, I think they call them like spot audits or quick audits. Is that something that you and Dr. Manker have maybe explored in talking with the state, that they could come in and do spot audits to see, you know, how fiscally sound we are at the wastewater plant, see if we can qualify for some of that money?
So having worked with Virginia Resources Authority as their partner in the, my former program, um, we would actually have to have a full audit.
Okay.
They're not, the, it's just a condition of the bondholders. These are public bonds.
Okay.
Good question, though. It is, if we could certainly do it.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to think creatively. Okay, all right, well, thank you, Mr. Crocker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Major Reed.
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, we too are, uh, requesting federal earmark funding. Um, and we want to use it to enhance our current, uh, public safety technology by the way of FLOC. Uh, what you'll see up here is, uh, full city coverage of, uh, shot detection, gunshot detection, um, enhanced LPR, FLOC OS, uh, FLOC nine-one-one, and what it does, basically, it centralizes all of our current technology to include our VACADA cameras in the one place. It works with our nine-one-one dispatch system, so when officers are dispatched, they can hear the live call, um, from the caller. It will also incorporate all the cameras in that general area. It has smart detection as well, so if a vehicle's involved, that vehicle will automatically be, um, picked up on any of the LPRs as it goes through, and that will be sent to the officers. It'll enhance our investigative capabilities. It'll reduce call, uh, response times, um, and, and definitely help reduce the shots fired and the violence that we're seeing in the current city. Um, it is in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-six, nine thousand dollars. When speaking with sus, uh, Sustainable Strategies, that's the, the, the sweet spot that they talked about that we need to be around, um, with this federal request. The money comes from, uh, COPS Technology grant funding as well as, uh, Burn grant funding as well.
So is this kind of like a real crime data center? Is, am I kind of getting that out of that or?
To an extent, to an extent.
Is it just getting us there another, another step towards that?
So what this, this is a real-time crime center on the officer's MDT and their cell phone.
Okay.
This isn't just a room with screens where we have to monitor or, or pay someone to monitor. Everyone has this ability in the agency. Um, and as our officers are responding to calls, supervisors, they can go live on their body-mong cameras, all of our technology ties into it, to include drones, but if we deploy drones, that can be tied in. If, uh, the shot detection, as soon as gunshots go off, it immediately links with every LPR and VACADA camera. Also, with this system, we can register seven hundred additional cameras throughout the city with, with citizens and businesses' approval. So that would give us a lot of the technology as well. So it's not just, not just limited to what we currently have. It's what we can kind of get that approval from citizens and businesses and, and kind of grow, you know, our mapping, so to speak. Um, it also, uh, has GPS technology on it to where, um, if there's an officer down situation, there's officer safety parameters in place. It just gives us a little bit more of an advantage.
Okay, great. Um, Counselor Holloway?
Uh, this is absolutely phenomenal. Uh, with the recent shootings, this was, uh, one of those things, you know, citizens are quite, uh, they haven't been brought up to speed specifically, uh, with the difference between like license plate readers and so forth. So everybody thinks the license plate readers are, are cameras, and they're like, how come people don't, you know, and, and they're kind of getting mad at the, you know, police department and, and things of the nature in the city. And so publicly, you know, kind of clearing the air with some of that to let them know, like, you know, of course, if there's cameras and access to it, we will get on that. So I am wide supporter of this. Also, after this money is done and put into place, do we have an estimated cost of how much this will cost going forward?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. This, this is for two years. Um, so this funding would probably be late twenty twenty-six. We would probably put it into effect, hopefully, if, if we're awarded, awarded the money, um, of, uh, twenty twenty-seven, January. So in twenty twenty-nine, we would be looking at, with this current package, which is beefed up, full coverage of the city, just under half a million dollars moving forward with, for our public safety technology.
Half a, now, are you talking about, so it's gonna cost the city half a million dollars every two years, you're saying?
No, I'm saying every year, every year. But this package is built to where we can reduce it. I don't expect we're gonna need ten-mile radius gunshot detections. This just fits the current earmark funding request. Um, that's where the significant amount of money comes from, is the actual Raven system itself. There's ten of them. Remember, we've, we've got plants, we've got a lot of areas that we don't need that coverage from, so I could see this almost cut in half depending on what data, um, and intelligence shows us over the course of those two years.
Uh, so I, I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd just like to say in support to, to the citizens, because I know they're probably thinking like, my gosh, that's a lot of money. Um, but the information that you're giving, this would significantly have an impact, um, on the reduction of crime. And, um, I think that's one of the major things that, um, our county citizens look, you know, look for, and also, um, incoming people who would like to, you know, kind of purchase houses and, you know, housing stock and different things like that in our city. So this is something that, with this technology, will help majorly reduce that crime.
It will definitely play a major role in crime reduction. Yes, sir.
And you're looking for action for this tonight?
So what we're trying to do is, uh, gain approval, so when it does open, so once the current appropriation bills make it through House, Senate, and they're approved, then about two weeks later, this will open and then go into next year's. So we're looking to be able to submit our request, um, and try to pursue this.
So upon information, Mr., uh, Mr., uh, city attorney, how would I move to appropriately act with that in accordance to?
These are all presentations. They're, they're coming back on the agenda for the twenty-fifth for approval. This is, this is to give you information, so you're not having to approve something the first time that you're here.
This is the new meeting style that we're trying to do.
Yeah. Gotcha, thank you.
One more thing, if you don't mind. Four hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred dollars. That's the exact amount with the current package after two years that it would cost the city. Again, um,
With the space of.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that is the gunshot detection. So by reducing the amount of Raven systems, which is what the gunshot detection is called, um, or formerly called, that would reduce the overall cost to the city moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to, uh, public hearings, uh, Mr. Ward, while you come up, uh, can we have you read the statement, um, Madam Clerk?
All persons addressing the council shall step to the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their board number and limited comments to three minutes. No one may address the council more than once per meeting unless granted permission by the presiding officer. Speakers address the council as a body, not individual counselors. Questions are asked of counselors and staff to the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in the council chamber may be reprimanded, reprimanded by the presiding officer and removed from the meeting upon a majority vote of counselors present, excluding any counselor who is subject of the motion. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Mr. Ward.
Good evening again. Um, tonight's public hearing is to solicit public comment regarding the city's community development block grant priorities in preparation for the development of our new five-year consolidated plan. So HUD requires that the city, uh, develop and adopt what they call a consolid, a five-year consolidated plan. Uh, it basically establishes, um, priorities for the city, for spending priorities. And our current one, uh, ran from twenty twenty until this year, twenty twenty-five, so we are in our fifth program year. Uh, but just to give you some quick, uh, background on the Community Development Block Grant Program in general, Hopewell is an entitlement community, so we automatically receive funding from HUD every year. We don't need to apply for it. That amount, uh, that we receive now typically is around two hundred and forty-five, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. HUD's mission is to create strong, sustainable, and inclusive communities with quality, affordable homes for all. And, uh, as a program, CDBG funds must, uh, the expenditure of CDBG funds must meet one of three national objectives. The first one being benefit to low to moderate income persons, the prevention of slums and blight or urgent need, which typically would be a federally declared disaster. Over the last seven years, the city's received total about one point five million dollars. And historically, the city spends, uh, about half of its allocation on, uh, emergency home repair for low to moderate income, uh, owner occupants. And then, uh, we spend a little bit of our money, about fifteen percent, which we're capped at, on public service. And then we have, um, some variation in our spending. Uh, one year, it's been, uh, some infrastructure. One year, it's been some infrastructure improvements, we've done some improvements to some city parks. And in this current year, we actually funded a second emergency home repair provider who's doing additional emergency home repairs. Our current plan states the following funding goals: owner-occupied housing rehab assistance, homelessness prevention, recreational facilities, employment training, senior and youth services.
Chris, I hate to cut you off.
Yeah, sure.
We need to do a meeting extension since we started the meeting at five o'clock. Do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we finish the Finance Committee meeting?
Some move?
Yeah, Finance Committee, item number four. Okay, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Jordan and seconded by Counsel Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes? Counsel Holloway? Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, continue, please.
Just to finish out, some of the funding priorities of our current consolidated plan would be services for victims of domestic violence, childcare services, neighborhood cleanups, public infrastructure, and food banks. So, as we are developing our new five-year plan, we will be soliciting public comment in several ways, tonight being the first. We don't anticipate getting a lot of public comment this evening, but it is the first of many different ways that we will be soliciting public comment. The other ways will be through a survey, through consultation with service providers, through the city website, social media, and of course, anyone can contact our department in any way if they have any comments about the city's priorities, goals, or funding strategies. So, I'm not asking for any action from City Council this evening, it was more just to make you aware of our, the start of our, developing our consolidated plan and the fact that we are soliciting public comment, as well as yours, in terms of the city's funding strategies going forward in the next five-year plan. Available for any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Ward before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing no lights, go ahead and open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to speak on it?
We do not.
No? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this topic that didn't sign up? No? Okay. Only comment that I have, and thank you, Mr. Ward, for, you know, bringing this up and starting the public comment process. I don't know, you know, all the ins and outs with HUD and CDBG money, but, you know, could we look at, you know, adding schools as one of those areas, like helping with some of their capital needs?
I don't believe that's a funding strategy under CDBG.
Okay.
Things, some typical types of projects that we would love to solicit would be some small infrastructure projects, typically like a seventy-five thousand dollar or less, because we just don't get a whole lot of money to begin with. Those are tough to find, because it's, infrastructure projects are expensive.
Okay.
Any parks that need some improvements, those would be good types of projects. Of course, housing rehab seems to be, emergency home repair seems to be a pretty popular program in Hopewell. The city's been doing that for years and years and years. We get good results from it, so I would encourage that that be a continued funding strategy. The ways that we could help schools, and in fact, we did this past year, we funded a school program called Hebron's Roxton Rulers, which is teaching kids in the high school about entrepreneurial business development. So, we can support the schools in that way through the program, but we can't really...
Well, I mean, if we can still support the schools that way, then that gives them savings that they can roll over to a capital project later through, yeah, okay.
Yes, sir, it's programming, it's not a lot of money, maximum's usually about ten thousand dollars.
But every bit helps.
But money's money, and youth services is one of our funding goals under the current program, and I would anticipate it being under the new five-year plan as well.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Ward.
Sure.
All right, moving on to regular business, Dr. Menker, R1.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, tonight you have before you the annually re-appropriated of unexpended funds for Hopewell Public Schools. On January the 28th, they presented to council an option to reserve city funds, and it was requested by council that the city attorney and the city manager draft a resolution in which you have before you today. The city attorney has drafted a resolution, and we are seeking the following recommendation. Council desires to reappropriate unexpended funds in the amount created by the city and designate those funds for the capital needs of Hopewell's school system.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the reappropriation as presented?
No.
Well, I'll second it, and then we'll go to discussion. Counsel Holloway?
Yeah. So, we've been in discussion before, like, continuously kind of like kicked the can down the road with the reappropriation of the funding. Was there a specific operating request for this need? Because it seems as if every year they end up having a surplus and an unnecessary need to reappropriate these fundings, which we could go to having for the city use to, depending on how to finance the work for that question.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm sorry, Counsel Holloway, please repeat the question.
So, basically, every year for the last few years, we've had a surplus at the school, which we're kind of kicking the can down the road, continuously reappropriating this unnecessary, it seems, amount of funds back to the school, which they weren't using. And at a point, it was always like a million, a million and a half, two million dollars, whatever. And so, I'm trying to see, are we, is it unnecessary to reappropriate these funds back to the school and their operating budget just for them to have there and not use? If the city could use this funding towards something else?
The city definitely could use the funding towards something else, but if I'm not mistaken, when we were speaking at a previous council meeting, the school board was here asking that they were, be able to give back the funds that they don't use at the end of the fiscal year. It was supposed to be an ordinance that was supposed to be passed to allow them to do that, because they do have quite a few capital projects that are currently open.
So, but those capital projects, they've, you know, been presented, you know, it just, it really concerns me, for example, with, and I'll just use these departments, there's probably plenty of other needs, but I use specifically the Fire Department and Police Department. Having need of funds, you know, they go out and aid our citizens, and there were so many capital projects that, for example, when I toured the Fire Department, like, really, you know, they had some really big needs that they needed, you know, things that if we were not audited, but if there was inspections done at the Fire Department, they would fail those inspections. And, you know, those are more emerging needs. It seemed like, you know, we, I think every council up here would definitely support the school's need for capital projects, if those projects, in comparison to what our Fire Department or Police Department would need, would be more comparable. But again, for the last, I know, three years or so, they've been rolling over a million and a half dollars that hasn't gone unused at all, and we keep on sending it back over to them. So, I really like to kind of...
Yeah. Mr. Holloway, so I just want to provide some clarity for everybody. You're absolutely correct, it's been five years, actually, that we roll over 1.1 million dollars. But, but, just for clarity, those dollars have went to actually make up their budget, okay? So, in, over the past years, it's been from 12.5 to 13.5. That rollover has been to actually develop a budget, not go into any capital needs. So, I do want council to take this into consideration, because now, if we roll over these dollars to go into their capital funds, those, that 1.1 million that was rolled over, it was used to help fund them every year, meet their funding requests.
So, now, specifically, these funding requests were coming?
Well, we're required to fund them, so...
So, the local match, if I can, the local match required by the City of Hopewell per the state is currently 8.6 million dollars.
Right.
The City of Hopewell gives the schools 13.5.
Right.
So, that's about five million dollars over the local match required by the state. So, they do get additional 5.5, roughly 5.5 million dollars. But again, at the last council meeting, the school board did come in and ask, because they do have a lot of outstanding capital projects that need to be completed ASAP, they asked for additional, and one of the tasks was to look at what was considered their mid-year assessment and what was outstanding, which was the 1.4 million dollars.
Right, so, even back to what Dr. Menker was saying, so it's almost like, at the end of the year, they have this surplus, and this surplus, they're asking to, you know, it's still not right. So, at the end, so at the end of the day, at the end of the year, they have this 1.5, whatever, so let's say a million-dollar surplus, and then they come in and say, hey, for the next year, we want y'all to give this money back to us for something that we have, and then at the end of that next year, it's still the same thing. It's a million dollars that they have not spent. So, it's really kicking the can down the road. So, even though it seems necessary at the moment, i- if the Fire Department came up in here and said, you know, had a 1.1 million-dollar surplus, they got a surplus, and then the following year, they say, whoa, let's go back and ask City Council for this 1.1 million dollars back. Now, if they have some projects that they can use, but we still, this is the same excuse every year, we still come to the place where there's still a million-dollar surplus. They're asking for that, that money to go to a capital project, but then the other funding is still unused. I think it's still kicking the can down the road every single year, as the city manager said, for the last five years. And there are so many projects that I think, I cannot be in support of it. I am very much in support that if the money is necessary, that they should request for those monies at the time that they need it, if they really need it. But at this time, it just seems like they're just asking for extra money that we can, for goodness sake, right now, they're, you know, the Police Department just presented something that they're not asking us for money specifically this time, but I'm pretty sure if you ask them, you know...
It's council's decision as to...
My decision is, I fully support school, and if it is necessary that the schools need something, but right now, it just seems like, again, for the last five years, we keep kicking that can down the road, and I do not think that it'd be necessary to continue to kick that can down the road and have that extra million dollars just sitting there.
Okay. All right. What I'll say is, you know, this is, to me, the complete opposite of kicking the can down the road. The reason why they have this extensive backlog of projects is because of capital funds not being met over the school system. And, you know, if they're running their budget, and they're, and if they are under the assumption that if we run our budget conservatively, can we, if we can take these remaining dollars and apply it to a capital project, that's one less thing for us to have to worry about. Because they can come to us, I mean, they came to us with their whole list, and they said, well, you know, we need 25 million dollars for all this. We don't have 25 million dollars, I mean, we don't have, you know, heck, I mean, we have, you know, hard enough time, you know, scraping money together. But, that's the good thing about the new financial policy that we have in our place, is that when we have these mid-year savings and reappropriations, we can start tackling capital projects. And, you know, I've got more confidence now with, you know, Mr. Crocker, you know, taking the realm of, you know, some of these capital projects, because the other problem is, the city appropriated money for capital projects and just sat on it, didn't do anything.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was speaking to. I was specifically speaking to the simple fact of letting it not be, i- if there's, if we can reappropriate the funds and it goes to these capital projects is one thing, but it seems like something is missing where at the end of the year, it ends up being a surplus, and they're saying it's not...
Well, it's not being a surplus, it's being used to build their budget for the next year.
Yeah, and that's kind of where we've got to get away from, and we've got to get back into the mode of the rebuilding part, you know, the funding these capital projects and these, you know, plans, because if the, you know, God forbid, the HVAC system goes out at Hopewell High School, I mean, we literally are, you know, up the creek without a paddle.
Yeah, we just hit the...
But, I mean, you know, again, you know, there's, there's more capital needs than what we have money for, but the biggest issue is just getting started and knocking stuff out. And I think this is a good step forward, you know, with schools, just as, you know, we did this past year with our, you know, mid-year savings, that Ms. Jordan and, you know, Dr. Menker did a good job, you know, putting projects together for us. Some of them were positions, some of them are, you know, capital projects, but, you know, this is something new that we are getting to, and it's a best practice that Mr. Bob and, you know, his team, you know, put together for us.
So, then they would have the approval to actually go forward and use the money on capital fund, on capital projects and it not be enrolled over, like?
Right, it would, yeah, it would go to a capital project.
Okay. Now, that I agree to, I just don't want it where it's just wasting, it's like they don't, they don't have the authority to use it, it just keeps going in circles, and then we don't appropriate them to be able to...
Yeah. Okay. Seeing no more lights, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Gaston, R2.
James Gaston, Deputy City Mayor, good evening, council members. Wanted to bring your attention to the opioid project that we are working with, Suri, Prince George, and then Witty. In essence, we are trying to create what is referred to as a opioid go-team, and what that team would do is in within 24 hours, we would have them to visit any type of crisis that happens in these jurisdictions. This funding is not, and I repeat, not affiliated with the direct funding that we are receiving from the opioid money. This is funding that is sitting, that if we do not apply and work with other jurisdictions to utilize the funding, it goes back to the jurisdiction, I mean, it goes back to the Commonwealth. So, the application is due April 1st. We need an approval to allow us or the group to utilize the funds for the grants. The application for the City of Hopewell has been submitted to the opioid group, so we're just waiting for the other jurisdictions to chime in, and we're going to submit the grant in April. And what we need is an approval to utilize these funds for that grant.
Okay. Counsel Holloway, then Vice Mayor Jordan.
This is the, we can actually make a motion on this tonight, because this is the second rule, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation that staff recommends the City of Hopewell to enter the cooperative partnership agreement with District 19 Community Services and surrounding localities for the purpose of providing a mobile overdose response unit, and approve the funding of 41,317 dollars to the opioid dollars for the FY '26, FY through FY '30.
I second it.
Okay. Motion's been made by Counsel Holloway and seconded by Counsel Harris. Is there any more, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Jordan?
I just have one question, just want to make sure, so, the 41,000 is coming from state funds, those are state funds?
Well, this is part of the opioid agreement that the Commonwealth came in with.
Okay.
And, real quickly, there are three buckets of money.
Yeah.
There's the direct funding that we will be receiving, we will continue to receive that.
Right.
That funding will not be touched.
Okay.
These are two separate fundings that you're supposed to work with other jurisdictions, like a recovery court or a drug court, or this go-team. If you don't use those two buckets of money, they go back to the Commonwealth.
Okay.
So, it just sits there.
All right.
The other jurisdictions came to us, came together and said, we need to utilize this money, or we're going to lose it.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Thank you.
No worries.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Counsel Stokes?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Moving on now into the Finance Committee meeting portion of tonight, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council.
Good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this is the Finance Committee meeting for the month of February. Citywide budget actuals for February, citywide revenues for February are trending point two nine percent or three point five million higher than twenty-five versus twenty-four. Expenses are trending one point two million higher or four point five million for twenty-five versus twenty-four. The next key due date for the City of Hopewell will be June the second. On page four is the breakdown in detail and again, on the side in the comments as to what is um trending increasing or decreasing or remaining consistent. Any questions on citywide? You're sorry, sir?
These um figures that we have with the three point seven, this doesn't include the, maybe there's a uh been a, what's the word, um, slow to receive, uh to to put out uh tax request um from, I guess, the church's office, is that resolved?
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm.
From what I understand, I was getting some, some citizens were saying that they had not received some of their tax bills in the normal time that they normally have received them.
Talking about personal property?
Mm-hmm.
So personal property, remember, council decided to extend the pay and I date to March seventh.
Oh, yeah, it was March seventh, but I thought, was that this year, I thought it was just last?
This year.
This year, okay, 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 makes sense. So what is that, a big reason as to why the revenue reflection is bad?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
So we have quite a few people pay on February fifteenth, but um as you can see, based on last year, it was five point three, and we're only at four point five for this year, so the additional should come through for March.
Okay, so then, it would look much better.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, general fund, general fund for February is trending six point five percent or six hundred and one thousand lower in revenues for twenty-five versus twenty-four. The decrease comes from, again, PSC and personal property, penalties and interest date was changed to March the seventh. That should balance itself out come March. Expenses for twenty-five are trending one point four or four point nine higher than twenty-four. Again, the next key due date is June. Any questions on the general fund? Enterprise fund, enterprise for February is trending two percent or one point nine higher in revenues from twenty-five for twenty-four. Expenses for twenty-five are trending three point six or nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand less than expenses in twenty-four. Revenues show a reflection of on-time billing versus last year, and expenses decreases, they stem from the reduction of emergency repairs. Any questions on enterprise? Schools, schools for February is trending two point two or three hundred and three thousand higher in revenues for twenty-five versus twenty-four, and expenses are trending point oh four or one point nine higher in twenty-five versus twenty-four. Any questions on schools? Okay, our data integrators collection from rate for February was ninety-seven percent. Accounts payable process, one thousand one hundred and fourteen invoices for the month of February for a total of five million dollars, and we paid our our sewer USB eighteen twenty-four debt on time for two hundred and fifteen thousand. On slide thirteen, this is a projected cash flow for the City of Hopewell, projected out to the end of the fiscal year, six thirty twenty twenty-five. We're looking at um having about twenty million in the bank account at the end of the fiscal year, projected out. Okay?
No, I'll make sure I put that.
Oh, okay. And our March items will be an update for fiscal uh fiscal year twenty-one, ACFR. Again, we're still waiting for the school items.
So, you know where I'm going with this?
Yes, sir.
Is is there anything that is currently in, as a roadblock, that is gonna prevent us from hitting our March thirty-first deadline right now?
David seems to think that we should hit our March thirty-first, the holdup right now currently is the schools. Um they have received, David has received about half of the items off of the PBC listing. We have been constantly following up with schools, we have also put out our requests to um our vendor that does our Gatsby reports. The city turned in ours in October, and the school just turned in theirs, so that we can make sure that once we're finished with twenty-one, we can go right into twenty-two and twenty-three, because that Gatsby report has to be completed. Um let's see, the consultant was in the schools on the nineteenth, and I believe she's supposed to be coming back, I want to say next week, is it Dr. Manker? To finish up, David currently has received two out of the five funds for the schools um that he's supposed to get the other three funds next week. So we've been trying to make, keep track of what's going on with the school systems as far as the items that are still outstanding and needed for the twenty-one ACFR. But as far as we are aware, the city, we talked to David Friday, the city is fine. Cash looks good, he's happy, he's gonna start working on enterprise next week, all of our items have been submitted, we're just waiting on the schools.
Okay, can you just send me an email?
Yes.
With just the items that are still needed, just a bullet point list.
Sure.
And then, you know, I'll, you know, send out another, your big email, and I think we might, you know, continue to get some traction.
You you received that on Friday, it was an attachment.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
What was left.
It's just so that way it's easier on my email for me to find, I can just take it and pull it.
Okay, okay.
Because, I mean, Janelle may have, you know, ended up, you know, getting something done here in these last two days too.
Right.
So, uh we had just have a, you know, a clean, you know, things that as of, you know, today, our Finance Committee meeting, these things are still outstanding.
And we have our school um meeting with them Monday as well.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, the only other thing, and I mean, this is kind of probably gonna, next, well, up now, we'll we'll wait till budget presentation, because I'll just, it's more appropriate there.
Thank you.
Um, I don't see anyone from the treasurer's office here, so.
Well, we only extended it until finance.
Well, we got all the way here, R four, or the fi- finance meeting number four.
Oh.
Did you, uh did everyone receive their packet from the treasurer's office as well?
Yeah.
If you have any questions, you can reach out to me or Ms. Bow.
Okay, so we're just gonna move right into the revenue report.
Yeah, um, city council, uh tonight, we're gonna begin our budget um presentations. We've been, we're a little bit behind schedule due to the the recent weather events. Uh before we get started, you have your budget books um here, so we'll move to this big book, okay, for our bu- budget presentation. And for those that are new, um we kick off the budget every year with the presentation of each department. Uh if the department does not, are not requesting any uh changes to their budget, you will not hear from them. Okay, and that's just an effort to 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 keep this process moving quickly. Um I will say, before we get started, there's a tentative meeting for next Thursday, the twentieth, for us to finish up the budget presentation. Tonight, we're only going to hear from five departments. Um and we're gonna kick this off with the city council budget, and we're gonna go in alphabetical order according to the table of contents. Then we'll have the city attorney, city manager, um economic development, and fire tonight. Uh and then on the twentieth, we'll complete the remainder of the table of contents. Uh but we'll kick this conversation off with the revenue, and then we'll move into the presentation.
So you said we're gonna do city council tonight, economic development, fire.
And city attorney.
And city attorney, okay, cool, okay. Go ahead, Ms. Jordan.
Alright. So the primary city programs and funds are general government, enterprise, public services, and schools. General government consists of the general fund, recreation, economic development, capital projects, dan- uh debt grants, the marina, and perpetual care. Enterprise consists of regional water, sewer, refuse, and stormwater. Our public services consist of social services, CSA, healthy families, and special welfare. The schools, of course, is their operational budget textbook cafeteria. Okay? Who makes the revenue forecast? Taxes come from the real estate assessor's office, as well as the commissioner of the revenue. State and federal departments and schools. User charges comes from departments such as uh refuse, stormwater, um HRW, and other, consistent of transfers and grants, only as accepted by council. The budget process. Budget work began on January of twenty twenty-four with departmental budget requests and first revenue forecast. Departmental budget entry and meetings with the city managers were February twenty twenty-five. Council work sessions, revenues is March eleventh, expenses and CIP will be March twenty-fifth. Department requests and presentations will be March eleventh and the twenty-fifth as well. Council public hearings and meetings, the tax resolution will be April eighth. May thirteenth will be the public hearing and first reading of the budget ordinance. May twenty-seventh will be the second reading and adoption of the bu- budget ordinance. Some important context, of course, revenues gain full meaning when compared to expenses, so usually you see your revenues aligned against your your expenses. We should be adopting a structurally balanced budget. Expenses presentation will be March twenty-fifth. Revenues may change before approval by council. Just an update, the report that you, everyone received tonight, we got an update on our real estate assessment, it came in about eleven percent, which is great for the City of Hopewell, this is a reassessment year. So that's a great thing. We do have a lot of initiatives this year as far as healthcare going up twelve percent, we're trying to implement the class and comp study, so this does help a lot. If revenues are insufficient to fund desired services, expenses must be reduced, again, we have to adopt a structurally balanced budget. Tax rates will remain flat for fiscal fiscal year twenty-six. Transfers are revenue moved from one fund to another, transfers can make a total revenue appear higher than it really is. So for example, when you look at your total budget and you see the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, majority of that comes from transfers, which is twenty, so your actual revenue is probably about one eighty instead of the total two twenty. On page six are the tax rates for the City of Hopewell, again, we're keeping them flat. Page seven is the sources of revenue. Our revenues come from, of course, real estate tax, public service, corporation, state revenues, local revenues, miscellaneous, other governments, charges for services, use of money, permits and licenses, penalties and interest, other taxes, machinery and tools, and personal property tax. If anyone would like a breakdown of what's included in the other taxes and miscellaneous, please just let me know, I will send you a slide. How our revenues are applied. Our revenues apply to the general fund, social services, schools, schools textbook, as well as the cafeteria, our CSA, refuse, HRW, recreation, marina, stormwater, sewer, perpetual, our debt, capital, and self-insurance. Okay, going to the general fund. Any questions so far?
Yeah, I got a question, um if you go back, was it two pages to page eight, um I know one thing that I would really like to see, um and I think, you know, most council probably would agree, is it's kind of sad that we only two percent goes to capital, um and we do have a lot of capital needs, just like what we were talking about with schools. Um, I would really like to see us, you know, especially with this budget, to try to work our way up to, you know, I know, it ain't gonna be ten percent this year, I know that, but, you know, I think over time, I think it would be really good to get to a ten percent that we're reinvesting back into capital needs in the city, the roads, you know, utilities, you know, everything that needs to be taken care of, you know, um whether it's vehicles, that, you know, departments need, IT infrastructure that's needed, public safety equipment that's needed. Um, I think that, you know, especially with this budget, we just, we really need to work towards ramping up that capital improvement per uh program. And I mean, and that's something that, you know, Alvarez and Marcel and the Robert Bob group both told us, well, and the state, you could throw them in there too, that, you know, that we really need to work on.
Understood, and I've also asked the department heads this this year to not only just rely on the general fund for capital projects, but look for under other funding sources.
Exactly, yes.
To work on capital projects.
Yes, um that's Counselor Day.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, uh Counselor Holloway.
I mean, that, I'm doing something, you know, when you go out on campaign trail, whether, you know, locally, or you're helping with um state persons or even federal, citizens don't understand anything, but mostly either I saw or I didn't see my elected official, and then the second thing right after that is our roads, our roads are not fixed, our roads are not fixed. If them roads are not fixed, they just feel like overall we're just not doing our job. It is like a constant, 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 constant thing, it's like, you know, they don't even, I I I'm not gonna say no, neither one of the citizens, of course, think about anything else, but overall, they just, like, if the roads are not fixed, we're just all together not doing anything else about a budget. Uh so not even in like the far-fetched future, I would love to see it input imputed in this budget.
For increase in paving?
Huh?
Increase in paving for streets?
Yes, and and well, like you said, altogether, the capital, um but I I would like to see that um imputed in this year's budget plan. I I think it is necessary.
Yeah, and I and I know um uh Austin Anderson, uh before, you know, he left to go work for VDOT, uh him and Mr. Butler worked together and actually had put together a plan, you know, getting the city back on the fifteen-year paving program. Um, and, you know, maybe this is a year that we can, you know, really get, you know, another step closer to to doing that. I know Mr. Crocker is, you know, going through and, you know, reevaluating, um, you know, projects that were approved, you know, with the previous city administration, and because of the the cost going up so much, he's thinking about, you know, just, you know, pulling the plug on those, reapplying for those, and those monies that we've already allocated for those that we can put, like, into the paving program. Um, you know, maybe look at that, and then also, you know, see what we need to do budget-wise to get us to either the fifteen-year paving program, or maybe, you know, just start with a twenty-year paving program, but I think if the citizens saw streets being paved, I think that they would be ecstatic to see more capital improvements being done uh in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, that and 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 sewer complaints, where they keep running out of water and, you know, stuff for the nature.
So stormwater and.
Yeah, stormwater, stormwater, especially stormwater and 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 pavements is is just, it's like a big thing.
Any other questions?
Charge forward.
Alright, general fund growth, the general fund has grown at a moderate pace in line with the recent inflation growth. Fiscal year twenty-six revenue increases occur in different tax categories. For twenty-one and twenty-three, there was a slight increase that stemmed from, of course, cares and opera funding that was received by the government. So for twenty-six, for twenty-five, we were looking at sixty-six point five million. For the general fund this year, twenty-six, we're looking for at sixty-nine million, so that's wonderful. Okay, real estate taxes. So I did change this on my side, because I just got the information from the real estate assessor's office today. So real estate taxes for twenty-six, for residential, as well as commercial industrial, have increased eight percent or two point eight million dollars. Again, this is a reassessment year, and as well, um council increased the tax relaxation. Taxes are due in June and December, twenty-three and twenty-six re- uh reflect assessment, reassessment years. So of course, you see the increase from twenty-three to twenty-four, and now you see it again from twenty-five to twenty-six. So the total will be twenty-five million four uh four hundred eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-six instead of the original twenty-two.
Tell me again, twenty-five?
Twenty-five million, four hundred eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six.
And this is with the, just the real estate taxes?
And the reassessment.
With the reassessment.
And and you say real estate taxes have eight percent or?
It's eleven percent total.
Eleven, I thought you said that, okay.
So this this is what, one of the things that um I talked about last year with us having, we just had a uh the state ass- assessment increased the, a couple years ago, and then we increased the real estate taxes last year. It is something that I I would like to see um us can take into consideration, because we're like one of the highest. Um and we specifically raised the taxes based upon the information that it was told to us that, you know, we needed the money, the money wasn't there, and we ended up with a surplus and so forth, before you got here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'll make that clear for everybody, but. But it is something that I think we need to consider for the citizens.
If I could just say something, councillor Holloway. Looking at the revenues for this budget season, you've actually lost revenue in machinery and tools and personal property. Because of course, as stuff depreciates out, the value goes down.
Right.
Now, the city did implement a cigarette tax. That only just balanced you right back out, honestly, from last year to this year with the loss in tangible property and machinery and tools. This is the increase that we actually need so that we can move forward with the health insurance increase of twelve percent as well as implementation of class and comp study.
Yeah, no, no, I know that, I know that now, you know, based upon what we're presented, I'm talking about owing to our citizens to get to that place. Of course, it is not a.
It's not.
Right now.
Any other questions on real estate? Machinery and tools. This is the decrease I was speaking of. In twenty-five, it was nine point five, and twenty-six, we're only getting assessed at nine point three. So we did have a decrease in machinery and tools. On page thirteen, personal property. This is a tax on tangible property. Taxes are due in February and the rate is three point five per a hundred dollar assessed value. So twenty-five is seven point five and you're up to eight point two for personal property. Public service, this is the other piece that is down. For twenty-five, it was five point one. For twenty-six, we're looking at four point nine. Local sales tax, a slight increase from two point seven for twenty-five to two point seven nine six for twenty-six. Any questions so far? Other local taxes. So one thing I did notice for twenty-five, the business license piece was omitted from the projections for, not excluded from your budget, but for the presentation piece, I included it in twenty-six. That is roughly about two point million dollars worth of revenue that the city brings in. So. Two point one million? So the projection for twenty-five was three point two. For twenty-six is five point six, which includes the two point one million dollars that was omitted from the presentation from last year for the business license. That's why you see such a large increase. It also includes the six hundred and seventy-five thousand in revenue from cigarette taxes that the city would receive for twenty-six.
I've got a question, I mean, this just doesn't seem to make sense, you know, other local taxes. So, you know, for it to go up two point one million. It was just, so it's been admitted historically, it's been admitted?
It's just from the presentation. Yes, 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 ma'am. So I wanted to show you everyone the full detail of the revenues. So I didn't want to just leave it out. I wanted to include it because that is part of the revenues that the city brings in. Non-tax revenues. User charger, charges and fees are the largest segment of the non-tax revenues. Twenty-four budgeted revenues reflect the carryover funds from ARPA. For twenty-five, you're looking at other three, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, grant a hundred and forty thousand, use of property and money is three hundred and fifty-one thousand. Fines and forfeitures is four hundred and fifty thou- four hundred and forty thousand, excuse me. User charges and fees is two point six nine nine. For twenty-six, we're looking at other for three hundred and sixty-four thousand, grants two hundred and eighty-two thousand, use of money and property, two hundred and ninety thousand, fines and forfeitures, three hundred and thirty thousand, and user charges and fees, two point six.
Councillor Holloway?
Can you explain the revenues reflect the carryover funds from ARPA because it was.
So do you see where it says use of surplus and it says one point five million? There really wasn't additional revenues that the city received. It was actual ARPA revenue from the previous year that just rolled over. Because of course you carry ARPA until this year, we have to expend everything by December, actually, of twenty-four.
From the ARPA money?
Mm-hmm.
So then I'm confused because I was under the understanding that we had already disbursed the ARPA funding because we were considering.
They were already allocated, but they had to be expended by December third. They had to be spent, yes, or we would have turned it back in to the government. General fund transfers. Revenue to the general fund is transferred out of other funds, which then show up as revenue in those funds. So for schools, of course, it's a thirteen point five. Recreation receives two point one. Public services receive two point one. Our debt is a million and insurance is six hundred thousand for a total of nineteen point four million dollars. Our enterprise fund. So HRW historical revenue. For twenty-five, it was eighteen point six, but it's been consistent at fifteen. So the projected, projection for twenty-six is going to be sixteen point five. Miscellaneous revenues is zero. This does not include the capital. This is just charge, user charges. Sewer, refuse, and stormwater. For sewer, for twenty-five was three seventy-nine sixteen. For twenty-sixteen, it's only about three dollars cheaper. Pilot is consistent, three hundred and thirty-four thousand. User charges are increasing a bit to eight point three from seven point zero nine. For refuse, for twenty-five, use of money is five thousand, it's consistent. And there's a slight increase in user charges from three point six, three million six hundred eighty thousand to three million six hundred eighty-three thousand. And stormwater revenues, there's a slight drop of seven hundred and forty-five. Now, this is consistent based off of the information that I saw within the system. It looks like they have been collecting about roughly seven hundred and forty-five. So I didn't want to overextend the revenues at nine hundred and four. It should be in line with what they actually received, which is a seven forty-five.
Question for you on the sewer side. The pilots, the payment in lieu of taxes. Is that something that, you know, we're able to adjust or can you explain? I know what that is on the stormwater side, but on the sewer side, what is that?
I will have to come back because I'm drawing a blank right now when it comes to the pilot. But I will definitely provide an update to everyone on what the pilot stands for.
And then the other one that I have on stormwater is our projection, I would think, would be going up on that because of the policy changes that we did, how we're taking it from the data integrators bill, and we're taking it from the monthly billing and we're putting it on the real estate taxes. So then that way we drive collections up and then we're not having to pay the data integrator portion out of that, you know, fund of money.
This is just based on billing. Now, we did not do any increases on the stormwater fees.
Right.
Right, so they remain the same.
But with the, with the collection rate being higher on taxes than it is with utility collection, I would think that we would see a projection going up on that.
Only if the billing was increased. So this is based off of billing.
Okay.
Yes, user charges.
Okay.
Payments in lieu of taxes.
No, we're looking at the user charges for stormwater.
Yes.
No, I was asking about the pilots.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
The pilots.
I said I will bring it back.
No, I was asking what that was still for.
No.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, that's what I said, payment in lieu of taxes.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, yes, that's exactly what it stands for, I'm sorry.
Now, do we get a payment in lieu of taxes from, you know, government facilities, you know, here in our city?
I believe we do, yes, sir.
Like the wastewater plant and all that?
I believe, yes, I believe it goes to wastewater and sewer, but I will double check.
Okay, because I would be very curious about that.
Yes, sir. I will provide the information for payment in lieu of taxes.
Okay, thank you.
So public services, public services, which includes social services, CSA, special welfare, and healthy families. So for social services, for transfers, they're receiving one point one. That is our percentage based off of what the state provides them, the general fund provides, I believe, is seventeen percent. Federal is three point one for twenty-six and state is two point nine. For CSA, we're looking at transfers of a million dollars and state of two point eight. For healthy families, we're looking at transfers zero. This is a grant-funded program. Other five thousand, grant a hundred and forty-three. As you can see, they had an increase from twenty-five to twenty-six. And then from state is four hundred and sixty-one thousand.
You say it's zero from the.
Transfers.
You mean going forward, not budget?
Going forward, yes.
Last year, what wasn't there we had voted to give them? To allocate them funding last year?
Was that included in transfers from the general fund? Is that what it was?
Yeah. That's what I was.
Three hundred and eighty-two. Our debt revenue sources. That is covered by food and lodging taxes, HRW and sewer rates, and general fund transfers. So transfers for twenty-four was one point one. For twenty-five, one million seventy-seven thousand thirty-eight is going to be consistent with twenty-six. For the mills tax, the estimated revenue is going to remain the same for mills tax at two point five million. And lodging taxes remaining the same at one point one. These are the figures that we received from the commissioner of the revenues office. The schools funding. School state funding has not yet been determined. We're still waiting for the state to adopt their budget. For twenty-five, twenty-six revenues are not in municipal system yet. The past city contributions has been consecentially thirteen point five, thirteen point six million yearly. The local match requirement for twenty-four as well as twenty-three was eight point six. City supplies an additional five million outside of the local match requirement for the school systems. Then we have our general fund, the, excuse me. The table broken down by category, real estate, public service, corporation, personal property, machinery and tools, penalties and interest, other taxes, permits and license, use of money, charges for services, other governments, miscellaneous, local revenues, state revenues, federal revenues, as well as transfers for a total of sixty-nine million. With the increase of the real estate, the total is now going to be seventy-one million eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and one. And I would do an updated presentation to include the additional revenues when we get additional detail from the state as well. This is just our projection so far. For all funds, we have our general, social services, school operations, schools textbook, schools cafeteria, CSA, refuse, ARW, HRW, excuse me, recreation, the marina, sewer, stormwater, debt, perpetual, capital, self-insurance, and healthy families for a total of two hundred and fifteen million six thirty-one four forty-eight, minus the nineteen point four million in transfers and the twelve point nine million capital for HRW. As you can see, HRW is including the capital here at two point nine. We have a total of a hundred and eighty-three point two million. Again, we're awaiting the state budget for the schools' local match requirements for twenty-five. For twenty-four was eight point six, and we, we were awaiting commercial industrial, but we received those figures today. Implementation of fiscal year twenty-six budget will go into effect on July first, two thousand and twenty-five. Finance staff will prepare for twenty-five budget rollovers by unencumbered budgets that do not have active contracts and rollover budgets that do not have active contracts. And the budget book will be prepared for distribution for a target date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'll come back at a later date when we have updated projections for the revenue when we finalize the budget.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, as we move into the actual budget presentations, we're starting with the city clerk. The city clerk's department is not requesting any additional fundings to their budget. However, the clerk does manage the council budget. And so tonight will be an opportunity for council to look at their budget, making adjustments for the finance department. And so to see your budget, it will be behind the city clerk.
Isn't that, it's going to be on the city clerk?
Behind the city clerk. It's actually the very last page. So you have a detailed budget in front of you currently. And so I'm not really sure if you can see it. It's this column here that says the original budget and then twenty-twenty-six budget. Okay? And so you, each councillor has a wart fund of three thousand dollars. Travel and transportation is ten five, and then add communication is three thousand. And then there are some general funds areas for things like any kind of retreats. We put that under management and consulting. So I'll go back to the mayor to kick off the discussion. For the council's budget.
Okay. You know, I'll start. I think, you know, one of the big things with us being, you know, in a tight budget season, I think, you know, we should look at, you know, cutting some things out of our budget. I know it always gets contentious with this, you know, every year. But I think that we do need to look at, you know, cutting down on these, you know, communications, the travel and public transportation money. And then we need to roll that over into the capital improvement fund. I just, I don't see any other way, you know, going about, you know, our budget. I mean, I certainly don't think we need any increases. Councillor Holloway and then Vice Mayor Joyner.
I most certainly disagree. We, I don't understand where the tightness came from. We just went from talking about having a twenty million dollar surplus. I mean, not, not a twenty million dollar surplus, excuse me, I just, I thought we just discussed having more funding and coming to a balanced budget and then eliminating the ability to be able to get education in this area. So the, the, the travel portion is definitely not a vacation. I don't understand why we would eliminate the, especially with new council members coming in and not having the opportunity to not having the opportunity to travel and go to the via mail and so forth and so on. And then you're talking about air communication, so then that's taken away from the ability to be able to communicate with the citizens, especially somebody like myself. We need to learn more information about how this money is spent and so forth, which the council does not provide those learnings, except we're able to travel. These, the numbers, madam city manager, that are placed here today and madam finance director is already included in the balanced budget, correct?
Yes, but as always, yes. But as always, we go through every budget and department and then we make changes along the way. But as of today, it's included in the balanced budget.
Correct, so we're already go here?
And I just want to say something, councillor Holloway. The increase that we've received in the revenues from the real estate reassessment, it really does help the city a lot because again, we're trying to implement the class and comp as well as the health insurance.
No, 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 I know that, I was agreeing to that. But I was saying, as far as what the mayor was saying, given the information, I thought it was misinformation to explain that we're talking about minimizing it. We are at a balanced budget. The mayor wasn't even in support even when we had a surplus, I think, last time of like seven million dollars. He just was not in support of supporting the travels for his personal reasons. But we're now at a balanced budget. But we're now at a balanced budget where this does not take away from.
I understand.
Uh, Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yeah, I, I, I would have to concur with the mayor that I think ten-five for travel is, is excessive. Um, I certainly report would, uh, support reducing that number significantly. I don't think any of us spent that. I mean, I would like to know what was actually, we don't see actuals.
No, no one spent it. No one spent.
That's what I'm saying. See, the actuals and, and then, you know, there's just no reason. That, that cuts like seventy-three thousand dollars or something.
It was money spent last year, that wasn't correct.
Not out of travel, not out of travel.
Yes, it was.
Who traveled?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor Travel and I went to Norfolk, uh, last year, wasn't able to go to.
Those were, you know, but I, I would, I would certainly, um, support reducing that significantly.
Now, now, I'll take that back because I wasn't under this understanding that the mayor was requesting for a reduction. I thought he was saying eliminating.
Well, I mean, you know, I think it's just a, a small.
I, I am in support of, I am definitely in support of, uh, reducing it because even with going to all of the suggested, um, things like National, uh, League of Cities, VML, and a couple of things in Washington, I think we can almost swipe it in half and it still be covered.
I mean, I'm thinking we could get away with two thousand dollars each in there.
I would agree.
And then, I mean, that's eighty-five hundred dollars times seven that we can move over into capital improvements.
No, that, that, no, that doesn't match because it was two thousand dollars just to get to the National, uh, League of Cities with airfare, with the airfare, uh, hotel. And, um, then the, what do you call it, the conference prices, the conference prices alone are like nine hundred dollars. So, there's no way you, you would eliminate, um, going to VML, um, National League of Cities. It just wouldn't be appropriate, I think, just to be able to attend just two conferences with the. I think the cost of the conferences is themselves are several hundred dollars. It's like, that's without, that's without the, um, that's without actually being able to travel. You, you, you got to pay for the tickets out of the same cost, which is included in our travel. And I think some of the conferences are like seven hundred, nine hundred dollars.
If I can go to a Corps of Engineers, uh, class, um, and I can get it under three thousand dollars, I mean, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, but you're comparing.
And that's a, and that's a week-long course.
You're comparing something respectfully, Mayor, that has nothing to do with the job at hand that we're talking about traveling. I reflect to the, the city clerk as to how much the conference costs for the VML, the, the actual conferences themselves, just for you to register us, and how much the registrations were approximately for the, uh, National League of Cities.
Nine hundred dollars was if you didn't sign up for the Black Corpus or it's, it's a. Yeah, if you signed up for that, then it was an, an additional two hundred dollars.
Well, then, then take it out of your paycheck then. I mean, I, I don't know what else to say. I mean, yeah.
It doesn't, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense at all. You, you're talking about take it out of the paycheck. First of all, I, my money not long like yours. Y'all know, you come from a rich family. That's not our background. I think it'd be quite ignorant as governing officials. Citizens complain all the time about leading the city appropriately and learning those informations. Why would you not want your leaders, um, to go to the appropriate conferences and, and receive the information? And a lot of these conferences, a, a, a lot, a lot of the, um, a lot of the information, um, that we obtain at these conferences help out quite a bit when it comes to, um, when it comes to bringing back information from those conferences. Um, and then, like, for instance, the city, well, city manager and stuff are separate, but you, again, the, the information that we gain, the things that we learn to be able to bring back, those things are important. But again, those things cost money and you can't expect somebody to take it out their personal funding to help support the information to get to the city. It just makes no sense. I think more appropriately, at least thirty-five hundred dollars in the travel expenses makes sense. It, it, it's travel expenses that I, I wouldn't, I don't think that the citizens would have an issue. This is not a vacation. You're talking about literally having to go learn information, bring information back to our city that increases the ability for us to get more grant funding and everything. Every department in our city does this. This is how you get more grant funding and so forth and so on. This is how you learn about those things. This is how you get educated, especially with things like the new AI, um, and different things of that nature. We learn those things at those conferences. So, again, the mayor just spoke to the simple fact of taking it out your own pocket. It makes absolutely no sense.
All right, so, uh, Councillor Day.
I think twenty-five hundred is a good amount. I'm now, I'm okay with that. I clarify, Dr. Manker, I mean, like VML and things like that, we can actually have them come here, correct?
Yes, but we, but we still will have a group, like a group charge. It won't cost as much as individual. But there'd be a group charge associated with it.
Right, okay. And, um, a lot of this stuff too is available online, which is cheaper than, you know, plane tickets. Uh, I'm definitely for, you know, taking the difference and putting it towards capital improvements that are going to benefit everybody in the city and trying to do more of the stuff online or having them come here at a cheaper rate, um, and still get, you know, the information we need.
So, do I have a consensus to lower transportation, public trans- travel and public transportation to twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, I, I have my light on for the discussion.
Well, hold on, I have the floor right now. Um, do I have consensus? Okay, let's see, one, two, three, four. Mr. Harris?
A consensus to lower it to twenty-five?
Yeah.
I, I don't have a need for ten thousand five hundred.
Right.
All right, I don't, myself. Uh, how many of the councillors used any of the ten thousand five hundred? Let me see, here's a question that I had before I would talk about it. Because if there is something indeed necessary for us to be in attendance to, I figure we should pay. But I don't think that it should be set at this right here so we can subtract from it so we can go wherever we want to go until we use that amount of money. It's not necessary. We didn't do it last year. All we would need, I would think, is a bucket of money, right? And if you wanted to go, you would go where you go. And be done with it. But it's not something that I would say that we would use to say, um, I want to go here and then there and it's just, I'm going to, you know, expand that way. It's, it, it, it's to me not, not need to have that amount of money there.
Right.
It's just for us to have just one figure of money for travel and education. And we would use that until it's gone.
Yeah, I think the reason why it, over time, it got broken out was because we ended up having, you know, one councillor in particular that used the whole budget. Or two councillors that used the whole budget. And then some of the others that didn't, never went on anything, weren't able to go on anything. So, they broke it out into seven line items.
Just cut it in half.
I, you know, in regards to, I can see reducing it. I would see, you know, just if we're going to have a line item for each councillor, yes, I, 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 I don't know what it is that we would need to reduce it to because I don't, I haven't been anywhere since I've been here, anywhere that would cost the city anything. But what I, I don't know how much it costs. And what, what, uh, if it costs to go to, uh, the League of Cities or something like that, the cost, whatever it costs, I think we should put the bill. And we lower it so low that we can't put the bill, then that's to our detriment. But I, I just don't see us just having a figure there so that we can just use it at our leisure. And then we would, you know, the money that you're saying that we need, hey, push it to where we needed to be. And I know last year when we said, I think, uh, myself and another councillor said, hey, you take mine and put it wherever, somewhere else, all of them. Because I'm not going to use any of them. Now, that's what I've been saying this year now too. So, when you started saying we're going to reduce it, what I don't want to be is, because it might be something that you may need to go to and it might cost three thousand or four thousand dollars to go to, right? And I think the bill should be put by the city. Now, if, you know, if that's the case, then we need to limit what it is that we are going to say we need, can do. That's where we cut the li- line, where we can afford. It's not in our best interest for you to go and learn maybe financially. So, uh, but if it is, we want to definitely go. So, but what I don't want to do is put ourselves in a trap in regards to reducing it to a amount that wouldn't even satisfy any of us if it was a need for us to go somewhere. So, uh, I, I don't know how else to, you know, replace my, 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 my understanding because I don't think that, you know, like, uh, if left up to me, you know, and I'm saying I'm not going with. That's not, that's me, I'm one of seven.
Right.
Um, you know, so what it is, if we're talking about reducing, yes, and I think that we should reduce it and, uh, push the money to what it is that you said that we really need. And everybody know what we need. Hey, we talking, if I could take the money and fix my own street, that's what I'd do. I mean, but, um, so when you say what I'm in favor of reducing it, yes, but I don't want to put a price on it, how much we going to reduce it tonight. I mean, let's, let's talk about what it is that can be, do we have to do that tonight?
Well, no, but she's just asking for some guidance.
Yes, so we can rearrange the budget. Uh, but I do want to bring your attention to the second page, Councillor Joyner. Um, there is the budget, the actual, um, they, yes, they just came up. So, it looks like, uh, twenty-eight hundred dollars was spent the most. And I can't tell you at this moment, if you look in the project codes, uh, we identify that, we associate that with a councillor. Um, the, uh, Vice Mayor Gore is the only person that went out of, out of the state last year. So, I, I'm assuming that that's her cost.
Okay.
Um, um, Councillor Holloway went to Norfolk. He just refreshed my memory on that. And so, um, his cost may be that one thousand dollars.
But I mean, that goes to, you know, my point, you know.
But, but again, the.
Hold on, hold on. Councillor Joyner hasn't spoken on this issue and then you can speak for the second time.
I, I would, the one thing we do have to, I do think it is, it behooves us to think that we, you know, I think we have, I think it's not been a good thing that we have not been active in Virginia municipal league. Um, we have a lot of, we have new members. I have, there are members that are sitting on city council for several years that have not even attended a VML conference or that kind of thing. And I know that, I know that there is a conference in November that I think I would like to attend. It's in Roanoke. So, there, it's reasonable to have some travel dollars there. Ten thousand five hundred is unreasonable or it's just, it's, it's excessive. And, um, so I think maybe it would, it would behoove us to look at what the, what are the conference registration fees going to be for the conference in November? And how much is it going to cost VML to come here? They're going to have to be paid to come here and do a conference here. So, let's figure out what those things are and then maybe we can come up with a better number, um, that I think would be, um, reasonable and, uh, not excessive. Ten-five is excessive, in my opinion.
And, and also, it was to my understanding that we ended up naming this just to travel and public transportation. But we had, that wasn't, if, uh, I mean, we can go back to the, um, to the minutes into that video, but that wasn't the original, um, plan either for the, it wasn't supposed to be just travel, ten thousand five hundred. We had eliminated other costs.
Lodging.
Um, and it was supposed to turn into where that ten thousand five hundred was supposed to be the total amount for, um, budget, uh, for, for like our travel, um, what you call it?
Food.
Meals, energy.
No, not just, yeah, the meals, the communication.
Lodging.
Everything was supposed to go into that ten-five, but for some odd reason, it spread out. Even the, we were talking about the war funds, but the communication, the travel, everything that was included was supposed to go in there. And also, um, the expression, if you go back and listen to the budget time when we were discussing that ten-five number, also, a lot of the council members that were opposing it, which is still some of the ones that are opposing it, uh, the mayor and vice mayor, uh, especially the, the mayor, uh, who was opposing it, spoke to the simple fact of them having already been able to attend those things. So, I think it is quite inappropriate or discriminatory that you now, um, eliminate the ability for others to be able to do those things when you haven't been able to do them. This is not a, a vacation somewhere, uh, on the city's money. These are actually things that's implemented for learning, you know? It's not out of book.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, Dr. Manker, um, you know, the request from council, it was twofold. You know, options, um, you know, one, you know, looking at it if it was just, you know, twenty-five hundred, you know, per councillor and then the savings, and then also looking at, you know, what, you know, one conference would be, you know, lodging, you know, per diem food, whatever. And then, you know, bring that figure also back to us.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll try to have this at the next, um, budget meeting.
Okay. All right, uh, Dr. Manker is going to move the other items to the next meeting since it's getting late. Um, so, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope, okay.